Thank you all for coming. It's seven o'clock. We have a quorum. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, the work-study minutes from the August 4th meeting.
I have a motion as second. Jenny, take the roll.
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pedo?
My motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you.
Let me pass these to you real fast and just have you sign them. Thank you.
We have another?
Yeah. Make a motion to pass the regular works, uh, town council meeting minutes from August 4th.
Do I have a second?
Second it.
I have a motion as second. Jenny, take the roll.
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pedo?
Aye. Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you very much. Mark, any comments?
I've had no request to speak tonight.
The general public.
No, sir.
Okay. Public meeting. First one, bid award Clearwell banning engineering.
Kent Elliott banning engineering. As you recall, at the last town council meeting, we opened the bids up for the ground storage tank that will be the finished water storage tank for the new water treatment plant. We did receive two bids as expected, and with that, we've reviewed both of those and are recommending the lowest bidder, which was DN Tanks. We submitted that to Mr. Ellison, Superintendent Ellison, and we are recommending awarding that this evening to DN Tanks.
Mr. President, this will require a vote from the council if you choose to accept Banning's recommendation. If we can ask Superintendent Ellison, does this meet everything that you've been looking for, for the Clearwell? Have some board with Banning's recommendation.
Okay.
I would like to move to accept the bid by DM Tanks for the Clearwell.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Jenny, take the roll.
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pedo?
Aye. Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Banning.
Thank you. I will require, yeah, I'll require signatures on this.
Now, it'd probably be our best bet.
I have four copies here with the notice of the award, and what we'll do is we'll incorporate those into the contract documents. The contractor will require these so they can go to their insurance companies and get the bonds and certificate of insurance, and then we'll incorporate that all into one contract document and then come back to you guys with it. This will already be signed in that, but it will have the originals in there, so that's why I'm requiring for those signatures, because we'll give you guys one, we'll get one, and the contractor will get one.
Go ahead and start with, do all of them need to sign?
No, just the board president.
Go ahead and do it now, and that way it's covered. Thank you, Kent.
Is that it? Just one? More? Sorry, I'll lick the pages for you. Thank you, Mr. Banning. Okay.
Thank you.
Proclamation to Ms. Rhonda Beck. I've noticed over the years, all the things that she's done, I've participated in some of the ceremonies and saw how professional they were, and we would like to give a proclamation and thank her for all her work for the veterans. So what I'm requesting here is a motion to agree to give Ms. Beck a proclamation. Do I have a motion?
I move that we recognize Rhonda Beck for her service to the community, for the military community.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Jenny, can you please call the roll?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pedo?
Aye. The motion's been passed five to zero. If you want to come up, I'm going to read this, and then we'll present it to you. Thank you, Mrs. Beck, for coming. Just stand there, okay. Proclamation, a proclamation by the Danville Town Council to honor Rhonda Beck, whereas Rhonda Beck is a member of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution and serves as the National Vice Chair, East Central Division for Membership. And whereas Rhonda Beck served as INDAR State Organizing Secretary 2018 to 2021, and currently serves as State Chair Services to Veterans from 2021 to '24. And whereas Rhonda Beck is an honorary regent for WE P K Y chapter, and whereas Rhonda Beck has dedicated her time to working with communities in six different districts in the state of Indiana, including the community of Danville, to display military banners for those who have served our country. And whereas, we must never forget the debt we owe these men and women who have served our nation or take for granted their contribution and sacrifices. And whereas Rhonda Beck has made it her mission to ensure that we will always honor those who have unselfishly put themselves in harm's way so that we may live in peace. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed, by the virtue and authority vested in the town council of, town of Danville, Indiana, we do hereby proclaim thanks and recognitions to Rhonda Beck for her services to our community and our nation, and witness whereof, we have hereto set our hand and cause the seal of the town of Danville to be affixed this 18th day of August, the year of 2021. So one minute, we'll just all sign it, and then we'll present it to you. Thank you for coming.
They sign it, we have to make a copy for the records, and then we'll bring you the original. Jenny, Lisa has agreed to go make the copy.
Okay, thank you.
I've watched over the years tirelessly.
I think I need to sign that, right?
Very good.
I thought they had already signed it.
Rhonda, if you wouldn't mind, stand up to the microphone, please.
Oh, go by the microphone.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Now I can hide my notes then. I'd like to thank the town council. I'm very humbled by this proclamation for something that I truly do enjoy doing, and that's working with and honoring the veterans. It's such a rewarding experience to work with them and get to know them, and not only the veterans, but also their family, of many of which I now call friend. So I thank the town leaders and the Danville residents for always being so supportive of the projects that we bring to you, and your support and participation in the town. I've always worn my heart on my sleeve for veterans and those who give themselves for our country. Being a member of DAR has broadened that platform and made for a bigger scope, so I want to thank the Waupikiwe chapter for the dedicated women in that chapter also, and of course, my husband, Rick, for being so patient with me to pursue such a fulfilling part of my life, and thank you so much for this. I appreciate it.
Hey, Rhonda. Rhonda?
Yeah.
You got a camera?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just hang around a little bit. We need to take some pictures. Thank you very much, Rhonda. You had all the paparazzi here.
Thank you.
Two newspapers. C. Resolution 22-2021, fiscal plan for annexing 2104 East Main Street. The planner, glad to see you're here.
Good evening. Sorry, I missed the last one. This is, as you said, resolution 22-2021 for property, for the fiscal plan for annexation at 2104 East Main Street, which I think is just west, on the west side of the Danville Dental. And it does require you to gavel the hearing open.
Okay. You have one meeting closed and the other one open.
Yeah. And a vote. It requires a vote as well.
Pardon?
It requires a vote as well.
While it's open?
No.
Yeah, we're going to close it. Nobody? So I close the meeting? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution 22-2021 fiscal plan for annexation. Second.
I have a motion as second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pedo?
Aye. The motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you very much. Another one for you. We'll have to sign this one. Lisa, do we have to hammer this one open and closed as well?
No. The public hearing was held on August 4th, so yeah, it's just up for adoption.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. President.
What?
Ready?
Ready? Okay. This is the actual ordinance for the annexation of the property you just passed the fiscal plan on, 2104 East Main Street, Jaclyn and Allison Bianchi.
Okay, thank you. Any comments?
Mr. President, I make a comment, or make a motion that we approve ordinance 23-2021.
A motion as second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pedo?
Aye. The motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. President.
The ordinance 24-2021, amended to cellphone allowances clerk treasure.
I presented this ordinance at the last town council meeting. It is to add our new building inspector position that is under Barry Lofton to allow him to have a cellphone stipend.
Mr. President, the employee in reference, I've had a chance to meet him, seems like a very nice young man. Time of time, he's going to be out in the field, and as we have set up many things for him to do in the future, I will make a motion to approve ordinance 24-2021.
Second it.
I have a motion as second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pedo?
Aye. Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you very much.
All right. F. Ordinance 25-2021, request for annexation. Town Planner.
Thank you. As you said, ordinance 24, this is up for introduction only and no action is required. Thank you.
Thank you.
No comments? G. Contractual agreement, Greater Danville Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. President, members of the council, before you tonight, I have the 2022 agreement between the town of Danville and the Greater Danville Chamber of Commerce. As was noted in our work-study session, I've not made any changes to this contract, and it is up for adoption by the council tonight, and should you sign it, then it'll go to the chamber for their board of president to sign. Ms. Di Benedetto had a family event come up that she could not be in attendance tonight, or she would have been presenting, and she asked me to present as a ex-officio member of her board.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments?
No.
Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the 2022 agreement between the Danville town and Greater Chamber of Commerce.
Second?
Second.
Motion as second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pedo?
Aye. Motion has been approved five to zero. Thank you very much. All right. Contractor agreement, downtown Danville partnership, town manager.
Mr. President, members of the council, tonight I have before you the 2022 agreement between the town of Danville and the downtown Danville partnership. I noticed that the executive director of the partnership's here tonight. If she'd like to speak, she can. The contract is the same as it was last year with no changes.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the 2022 contract for the downtown Danville partnership.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Okay, I just, Jewel, for one second, is it okay that Nancy makes the motion to approve the contract because they're family? Do we need to have someone else make the motion? The director of the downtown partnership?
Jewel, that's her daughter.
But there's no financial. It's an offer. If that's the case, then...
So, if we're going through that provision, there's, there has to be a fiduciary benefit to Nancy's daughter specifically that comes from that. If this doesn't have a fiduciary benefit to it, then there's no conflict of interest and nepotism that's involved there. If there is, then Nancy, I'm going to tell you to recuse yourself from the vote. I mean, I don't know how it's structured with them.
It would probably be safer for her to do it, because we pay the partnership $80,000 and does earn a salary from the...
So because it's fungible and money, then you can't say, okay. So with that, I would recommend that you recuse yourself from the vote.
All right.
So I would start over asking for it if there's a motion to support.
I'll just say I recuse myself. So we're going to vote on this again? A motion, and Nancy?
I recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, so we have four people to vote on now?
We still have to make a motion, all right? I have a motion that we approve the contractual agreement between downtown Danville partnership and town of Danville.
I have a motion as second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pedo?
Motion's been passed four to zero. Thank you very much. All right. Aye. Contractual agreement, Marion Township Fire Protection, downtown manager.
Mr. President, members of the council, I come before you tonight with the interlocal agreement between the town of Danville and the Marion Township concerning fire protection and rescue services. This contract's been in effect since, I think we went back to 1985. It's been the same amount the entire time. I checked with Chief Roberts. He did not have any desire to raise the contractual agreement for Marion Township to pay us for fire protection.
All right. Any comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contractual agreement between the town of Danville and Marion Township Fire Protection.
Second.
I have a motion as a second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pedo?
Aye. Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you very much.
So I have a great deal to report to you tonight. Met with the department heads Monday, and I think of who we'll start with here. Looks like we'll start with fire. They had 1,000, or up to 1,225 runs, or 223 runs up from last year. They have three employees attending the Indiana Fire Investigation Conference at the fairgrounds. They'll be doing a joint training with Avon, working on drafting and relay pumping at the airport on 300 East. They have audit review this week, the Hendrix County Aviation Association fly-in, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Saturday. Then Liberty Fire Department has been using Station 191 for firefighter one and two classes. Department Stratford Ridge entrance signs being installed. The comprehensive plan is in draft form, full text of the documents now drafted, working on reviews of the work, internal rough draft. Has been formatted, finalizing graphics, images. They want to get the steering committee together to review everything, possibly by Labor Day or right after Labor Day. RDC met, and as you talked about earlier, about the Dairy Queen block, working to get appraisals on existing homes in northeast corner of Tennessee and Maine. VZA meeting was last night on a sign height variance. No, nothing's been submitted for plan commission for September, and they're hoping to get money budgeted for zoning and subdivision control ordinance, which I think we're calling a UDO. Is that correct? It's a, we're wanting to merge the subdivision control ordinance and the zoning ordinance and get everything in one book. It'll be so much easier for builders and for us. The water department installing meters, reading radios and meter routes, second round of, and I made him actually write this out, back T samples and the annual IDM samples for the year at the water treatment facility at the Hendrix Regional Health. It was all kinds of IOCs, VOCs, TTHs, and he started spitting off all these acronyms, and I'm going, I assume that'll be in a written report, and he was like, yes, it will be. They're short on staff this week, beginning at the weekend, the following week. They're working on hydrant maintenance, painting and greasing throughout the town, possible installation of stores connections, which is a specialized connection the fire department uses. Walkthrough of Kensington, sections two and three with the building inspector. Parks Department is working on new uniforms, trail maintenance in Blanton Woods. They're at the process of hiring a full-time maintenance tech, part-time recreation coordinator. As always, Will's fertilizing, maybe I misunderstood that, I'm sorry. Working on marquee landscaping, pool painting and winterizing has started, and believe it or not, they're setting up already with winterland meetings. It's already that time of year, so. DPW, the alleyway on the south of the square has been completed and reopened. They reconcreted all of that based on a complaint. Lincoln Street, there's been, being prepped for sidewalk install. They're pouring concrete, weather permitting. What'd you say? You're doing 90 feet at a time? Is that correct? Hundred, hundred, okay, there you go. Continuing to raise tree canopies as time allows, though we're removing dead trees in front of 52 East Main Street. Tree committee will be discussing the feasibility to replace the trees when the others died. Finalizing paperwork for the state for the 2021 Community Crossing, 2021-1 Community Crossing grant, working to schedule the mill and overlay on Heritage Drive, and they'll be assisting the partnership with Summer Sounds Concert this weekend, and assisting with the road closure for the fundraiser at kickstands. Madison is still working on interviews. She's re-implemented, I believe, or started an Instagram account for the town. She's meeting with other town PR folks. She's working with Parks on the playbook and working on education posts, and I have to be honest, I'm not sure Park Facilities, what, Marketing Park Facilities, got it, thank you. Wastewater, chemical feed flush, the system, system finished, rotating clarifiers, semi annual maintenance of belt filter press, VAC 5 lift stations, replace control switch on exhaust fan and control building, sewer main line cleaning, they've been mowing the lots, which I'll discuss here in a minute, and they're running, they've been running the belt press for three days. Stormwater department, chiller update, no delays, it's expected to be on schedule. Starting... Starting drainage work on 150 East for recent road improvements. On the building maintenance, CT's office HVAC units have, they've replaced the filters and the motors. Projected new single-family residential starts at three per week. Northwood Haven subdivision is making application for four road cuts for new water, sewer and stormwater lines. And then I have just a few things. As we discussed in the work study, we did make an offer to a young lady for the office manager's position. We'll have to tell you what her name is.
Tasha Hensley.
As you know, as you can tell, I let Will and the staff handle the hire, so.
When will she start?
Two weeks from Monday. That part I knew. In reference to the property, we have been waiting for quite a while for a core or bore sample of the property on Harrison Street before we move forward with anything, and as it turns out, we don't believe that property's going to be sellable. It's kind of been holding up the whole ball of wax, but when the samples came back, and you can ask Barry if you've got any questions, but it's, it's truly just fill. I mean, there's, I don't even know how to describe it, it's bad fill. So we've got some options. We don't think we can reasonably sell the property without some full disclosure of it, so. Been talking with Will, we've got some ideas that, you know, we could look at a possible pocket park, another pocket park like we did with Jack Willard. We could expand the, probably the cheapest thing would be to expand the community gardens project. Right now, there's one obviously on the south side where the schools are, and we could do another project on the north side, obviously, and have garden spots, you know, because I think Jenny, you guys always have people requesting those.
Yes.
Have I done something wrong?
No.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry.
I'm just thinking about, you know, if that lands available, you know, is it healthy to plant, you know, vegetables? Sorry. Scroll, I just went off on the soil.
What we recommend, if people do grow theirs, is that if the sunflower grows 20 feet, you may not want to, you know, go near it, so.
About to say what's in there?
Especially if it goes, "Feed me." Sorry, sorry. Sorry, it's an old joke. But there's, there's, I don't know what they got into. I know they hit water at 18 feet, which we thought was interesting. We actually called Matt and said, you interested? And he wasn't, so. But yeah, there's old pipes underneath there, and they found a drawing from 1911, I believe it was, and they weren't, you know, weren't real descriptive, but it says, "Deep ravine." Now, if they use the word "deep," it was probably pretty deep, but I've heard reports there was a Volkswagen Beetle underneath there. Does that sound right? Yeah, there were, and we think maybe the old town meters are actually buried in there, the old parking meters, so. It's, again, I'm just telling you that, you know.
Is there money in them?
There may be, you know, and if we wait two more weeks, what was buried in there, I think Jimmy Hoffa may turn up, so.
Yeah.
But anyway, I'll keep going, I'm sorry. But we are ready then, and I'll get with Jewel, we're ready to move on selling the property on Tennessee Street. That was kind of the whole, that we were going to do them as a package deal. So we'll get those, that put on the market. We have interest in the property, not just by local landowners. We've had calls come into our office for them, so. We're still going to hold our ones on Broadway and Tennessee until we know what we're going to do with our road expansion projects, so. And I'm trying, is it snowing? Is it raining? Is it?
No, we're just watching a police officer. He's just parking right there on the side.
Okay.
Going back and forth.
Jimmy, you better watch your men out there.
The, at the next work study, we're going to have some questions on policy changes, and is one an ordinance change or is the other, are they both policy changes?
They're both policy changes.
Okay, both policy changes. We'll have an ordinance change request as well, and then I've asked the attorney to look into our ordinance, I think it's ordinance 92. Does that sound right? Is our tree ordinance, old section of tree stuff? Anyway, I think it is, and he's going to look into finding out whether we need to maintain those. We just, we never, I don't know that we ever achieved the status that went along with that project, so.
So in our initial research, when we look at it, Danville is not recognized as a Tree City or Tree Town USA, and that is one of the requirements to be, so if you're not going to pursue that designation or go after it, then I don't think there's any reason, there's no statutory reason to keep that in place, and so I, we think that you can move that under the Parks Department, just a question of how you want to set that up.
You have something, Jenny?
I just wanted to go back to the policy changes. I kind of wanted to get a consensus from the council tonight because that's something Tap Law will work on. If, what I'm proposing to you guys is that we increase the reimbursement for CDL physicals. They've gone up from what we reimburse, and each employee's paying that out of their pocket the difference, so I would like to change, it's, the CDL isn't as much a policy change as it just is in the minutes at the next meeting, that I would like to change it, that it states that we will reimburse for the full amount of the physicals so that the employee's not out anything, so I'd like to bring that forth at the next meeting. And then the second thing, which is a policy change, which will involve Tap Law, is we have not increased the amount of per diem for meals when employees are attending conferences and in training sessions and different types of things like that. Mark and I went back, I think it's been the same for at least 20 years, as far as we can tell, so we would like to increase that, and we're working with Jewel to do that, but I wanted to get a consensus from the council to go ahead and give the okay to Tap Law to look at increasing our per diem to bring back to you as a policy change.
While we're going consensus, do you want to get it all at one shot? Or do you want to take it one each individually? It's up to you.
Jewel, does it?
So.
You guys okay?
With everything that she's.
I see nods.
But. Couple others, we need to revisit our purchasing policy. There've been some omissions over the years that we just need to clean up, so we'll bring it, if you guys are okay with it. The other thing that I would like to do, as we were discussing, we kind of skirted the issue, but we want to explore the possibility of vacating the Tree Advisory Committee and putting those roles underneath the Parks, Park Board.
That sounds logical.
We just, it's a good fit, it's just another board that if we're not going to achieve the Tree City USA status, then maybe it's time to revamp that. Again, we're all looking for consensus here. The other thing that staff would like to do in 2022 is propose the move, that we move all of our meetings to Wednesdays, and what we're proposing would be, the first Wednesday of the month would be maybe design review, our work study, and then a council meeting. The second Wednesday might be BZA and Plan Commission, and then the third Wednesday might be Redevelopment Commission, work study, council meeting, and then the fourth might be Park Board, and I'm sure I'm missing Redevelopment maybe or BZA, I can't remember, I'm missing something, I'm sure, but, and then, and then we have, we have some boards that meet quarterly, so the EMS Board or the Ambulance Review Board, we can swing them in, the Police Merit Board, we can swing them in on their quarterly meetings, you know, we would just, it's going to require us to adjust some times, not for this, not for this body, but for the other boards, and it's going to require them to kind of rethink, instead of meeting on Thursdays, they're going to meet on a Wednesday. Instead of meeting on a Monday, they're going to meet on a Wednesday. And the reason we're proposing this, quite honestly, is, is for convenience. A lot of you serve on multiple boards, and we know it's, you know, you have great calendars, great minds, but it, you always know on a Wednesday, if you think you have a meeting, it's probably going to be on a Wednesday. The, for staff, we think it's going to be easier for staff, because, you know, if on the Wednesdays that, you know, that they know they're going to have to be here from noon to whatever, they can come in at noon instead of coming in at eight, and then, you know, trying to flex off at some other time. So I'm looking for consensus on all of these matters. And if there's any of them you don't like, tell us now.
In Washington, they call that pork barreling.
Yeah, I understand, sir. And I, and I'm the epitome of the image, thank you.
You're welcome.
But to begin, these are just, these are things that we, we want to bring to you at the next council meeting so that, and I know the next work study's going to be packed, so if we just bring them up to you now, that way we get your consensus, we can work on them for the next two weeks.
Okay, thank you, Mark, for selling that.
Yes, sir.
How do you all feel?
Sure.
Got a lot of yeses.
I feel like Jewel's going to be busy.
I'll find somebody to be busy.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
And ring around here, Willie, William?
All right, so I just wanted to update everyone on two things. Sidewalks or trails, sidewalks and trails, we're looking at the possibility of doing like pre-construction drawings and layout to find out what the project may cost from pretty much town hall to the fairgrounds is pretty much the first phase of the trail that we want to do. So I'm going to look into that. I may have some costs coming back to you, maybe by the next meeting, but probably two meetings away. And then also, I'll be working to get the right of way along the Money Lane project, where we're looking to do a trail all the way to the Arbor Homes area, so I'm going to be looking at those two on the sidewalks and trail side. And then I just wanted to update you on the Traffic Solutions Committee. We've met twice now. The first meeting was more like throw all the projects out, so it was more of, hey, what do we have? What are our problems? Then the second meeting was actually real productive. We had the state, we had the county, we had a lot of engineers in there, and we came up with some good ideas. We narrowed our projects down a little bit, and so from there, we're looking to take our projects, get some like prelim pricing and describe what they are a little bit better. And then we're also going to have a map that would, you know, kind of correlate, here's A and As on the map, so you'll be able to read it. And then we are also going to look at getting estimates for studies that show where is the traffic going? You know, do we have a majority going north? Do we have a majority going south? You know, east, west, depending on when. It's, that one's going to be a little bit pricey. We're looking at the possibility of Bluetooth, where we can actually capture them coming into town and leaving town, or not leaving town, then you know they're, they're here. We are, we're also looking at cameras. There's a camera option where it catches them on one point and then the exit point, and now you know where they went. And then we're looking at a third option.
Really, these are temporary cameras?
Yeah, temporary, it's really expensive.
We don't purchase these.
No, 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 we would, we would hire, we brought in two traffic engineering companies because we want to make sure we have the best options out there, and then kind of letting the, the group kind of pick which way to go, and we're just getting the estimates right now. That's what's, the time, it just takes time to get those things, because some of these projects are pretty, pretty good-sized projects, but we're looking at, you know, if we're, if, these are going to be big projects, like really big projects, so we want to make sure that if we are going to put money into it, it needs to be a very educated guess on where it's going to go and where people are going, and you'll know where they're going kind of from there, you know, and that, that changes over time, but we're only going to be able to grab, you know, a small window of that and have to analyze the data from there, but I just want to let you know we are making progress, it's just going to take some time, and we want to make the best decision possible once we get there. We'll come back with probably four to five options and kind of have some public input there too, and then kind of have direction, and then you guys can decide where you want to go from there, so. But we are making progress, and we probably had one of our best meetings this past meeting, so. And thank you to all the department heads who, who came out as well, and the state and the county, I mean, it's really been a great effort so far, so.
Will, just real quick, I know these trees are probably going to come down when we build the new water plant, but over by the Rotary Gazebo.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of limbs, I mean, just walking through there, you know, it's, they're bashing you in the face.
Oh, are they?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you get when you put in pear trees, it's like.
Yeah, yeah. Like, they're weeping willow pears.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring them up.
Got it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Willie.
Thank you.
William. Chris? Nancy? David?
No, I don't have anything.
I didn't see you way back there.
Good evening. Just want to let you guys know that, David, did you notice the traffic light at 300 East and 36?
I did.
Was it on?
It was on at about 4:45 when I passed it, and people were slamming on their brakes, so.
That was activated today, and just want to make sure everybody's use caution in the area until everybody gets used to that light, so there'll probably be some accidents in that area, so I just wanted everybody to be aware of that and be safe in that area.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
David?
Sure.
I don't have anything.
So since, since the last, since the last meeting, I had my little meet and greet with Madison, so really enjoyed spending time with her and getting to know her, and I found out that there's a new office in DAC. I had no clue it was even there, but I found it after, after somebody gave me some help, so. RDC meeting, participated in that. Ben came in and gave you guys an update. I just want to kind of expand on that, that the RDC's been, you know, working for a number of years and, and, you know, really hasn't had, you know, a whole, I don't want to say a whole lot to show for it, because they've been making a lot of progress, but some of the things that are coming down the pipe now are, are going to be noticeable, and some really good things, and, and will probably lead to, to other good things in the future. They, the TIF money that Ben had alluded to actually came from the development of the Justice Property to the east of town, and, I mean, it's, when you, when you've put something together and then you finally see it pay off, I mean, it's just, it's good, it's good information. Want to thank the department heads and Jenny for entertaining all of us, you know, with our questions as it pertains to, to the budget. I know that, you know, you guys kind of sometimes deal with this day in and day out, and, and when, when those of us who don't come in and start to upset the apple cart a little bit, you know, appreciate your guys' patience and, and your willingness to answer, answer our questions, and so as we go through this process, there'll be more questions, and, and again, just appreciate your guys' help and your patience on that. Last thing, something I've just been thinking about, and, you know, as we're talking about wages and hiring people and things like that, I think David and I have had some conversations about this, but I just want to go on record and say that I would never be in support of making it mandatory for any of our employees to be vaccinated or, in the future, even wear a mask. I'm not a fan, and, you know, I just don't, I've seen too many, you know, corporations, you know, make these things mandatory. It is an individual's choice, and they're free to do what they want, and I want our employees to feel free to do whatever they feel is in their best interest.
Completely agree, 100%.
Thank you.
Nothing further, Mr. President. Okay, thank you. Jenny?
So when we were looking at replacing the office manager position, we met about how we could tweak that job description, and one thing that came up and that we really need is a grant writer, and someone that specializes in grant writing. It is an encumbering task, you have to have a great deal of knowledge, and it encompasses every department within the town. There's grants for police, fire, park, administration, community crossing grant, public works grants, water, all the utilities, and so we. water, all the utilities, and so we would like to present to you the possibility of sending out for an outside consultant to be a grant writer, that there's people, I already have some interviews set up for next week, there's a committee that we formed to interview and to bring that forth to the council, so I just kind of want to get your blessing that we move forward with that. It would be just like any of our outside consultants, our engineering firms, our CPA firms, our attorney firm, this would just be a grant writer, and, and that's designated, Greg, you and I've talked about it, that that is their expertise, that's what they do every day. I talk to other clerk treasurers within the state of Indiana, that's what they do, they outsource. The larger cities have an in-house grant writer, but most towns, especially our size, outsource for that, so I'm just looking for a blessing that we move forward. I have met with Barry and Andy and Will and myself, and we're going to serve on the committee with your guys' blessing to move forward in that direction.
Okay, I, I think that would be beneficial for the town.
Okay. The next thing I have, I sent out an email.
I don't know, how to rest you feel?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
For nodding, I'm sorry, okay, everybody's good, okay, thank you.
I was just speaking for myself.
Move forward. The next thing, I sent out an email this week, we, I will be bringing forth a resolution at the next council meeting to amend our holiday resolution, we would like to move the Christmas party to Friday, December 17th. It's another one of those things, for 20 years, it fell on a Thursday, it doesn't make a lot of sense to us, for employees and vendors, it would be better to have it on a Friday, and I have met with some restaurants in town, and we have decided to go with Kickstand, they're going to close to have a private luncheon for us and the vendors, so it will be Friday, December 17th, at 12 o'clock noon at the Kickstand on North Washington Street. I'll bring forth the resolution to them in the holiday resolution at the next meeting. And the last thing I have is our next work studies, August 25th, of course. The agenda will be sent out tomorrow, but this is, this binder is your packet. We have scheduled times for each department head to present, some feel like they need a half an hour, some need an hour, so I'm scheduled from 5:00 to 10:00 next Wednesday night. Mark and Lisa are providing lasagna for dinner, but just plan to be here.
Five to nine, right?
Well, Matt's the last one, and he comes on at nine, so no pressure to hurry, but his is pretty easy, the utilities are pretty easy, and I think it could move way faster than that, because like I said, you each individually have talked to your department head, you've met with your department head, you've met with Mark and I. I don't look forward to take as long as it has in the years past, it's taken four to six hours in the years past, but since we've put that step into play this year, it may not take as long, there'll just be questions from the other council members that aren't liaisons.
You're talking next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, 5 o'clock, please, and just kind of, hopefully we'll be done by nine, but you never know. We did well tonight.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Claim dockets.
Make a motion to pass claim docket.
Second.
Everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Claim dockets approved. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second, everybody approve, aye.
Aye.
Close, thank you.